All right, it's 1:30, shall we? All right, why don't we go ahead and call to all of this special meeting of the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency Board of Directors. Ask all of you to rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chair West.
Yes.
Director Aronio.
There.
Director Craven.
Yes.
Director Wartcher.
Yes, here.
Agenda review. Apart, I think we are moving item seven to a future date. Apart from that, any other items on the agenda that need revising?
Item five?
Not that I'm aware of, Chair, sorry about that.
All right, public comments. This is an opportunity for public comments for any matters not on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make a comment, please step forward and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Terri Farrell, grower in the Oxnard Plain, the La Sposas area, and also I have a home in the agricultural area in Santa Paula-Ventura. And I just want to comment on how irrigated agriculture saved my home during that fire. All right, so I know some people here for sure have lost their homes, and I feel horrible for you, and my heart goes out to you. But I live north of Foothill, between, well, just east of Wells Road. And when that fire came through within, it was probably two hours from the time it started in Santa Paula till it got to my house almost on Wells Road. But with all the devastation, if you step back, let's say you go over by United, or you just drive along Foothill, okay? There's really nothing burned along Foothill Road from Santa Paula all the way to, say, Kimball, where all that irrigated agriculture is, okay? And if you go other places, so open spaces, like if you go up Wheeler Canyon, it's the apocalypse. Or even along, I drove along 101 yesterday, from, you know, along the Rincon, where all that kind of open space is. It's devastating up there, okay? So, and I wouldn't ever suggest that we have enough water in this county to irrigate much more open space. But what we do have is a great wall of protection right there, and I would encourage you to do everything you can to keep water available for that irrigation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Board member comments?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, moving on to the consent agenda, unless there's something someone wants to pull off the consent agenda, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on then to item number five on the agenda.
Good afternoon, Chair West, Board members, Arne Anselm, staff to the GMA. Due to some significant and very helpful comments we've received on the draft, not, sorry, resolution, the technical specifications on AMI, I think we can greatly improve it with a little additional work. So it's my recommendation that this item be postponed until the 24th and allow the Operations Committee to work on it a little further. They are scheduled to meet this Friday, and to give them and the people making the comments a little more time to work on them, my recommendation is to move the Operations Committee to the 12th, one week later.
First, with respect to tabling this advent of the 24th, any objection?
No.
Just a clarification, though. I think I received an email this morning saying that we did have an Operations Committee planned for the 5th. Now you're going to get back in touch with us and move it to the 12th?
Yes. That's my recommendation.
With you? Does that fit your calendar? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on then to item number six. An update on pumping allocation plans for OPV.
Good afternoon, Chair West, members of the board. For the record, Kim Wob, it may sound a little different.
Who is this person?
Like many of my friends and colleagues here, I see, we all seem to have gone to the same party and come back with the same cold, I don't know. So if you'll bear with me, we'll come through.
We will, but we'd just appreciate if you'd back up.
Yeah, that's why I was sort of sitting in the corner by myself there. So as you recall, we came to your board on the November 13th, board member, to present to you an interim allocation system for the Oxnard and Pleasant Valley basins, as your board had directed us to do. As the stakeholder proposed system was not at the point it was going to be ready yet. And some of the principal points of the proposed interim pumping allocation system were that the total allowable groundwater pumping would be split 60% agriculture and 40% municipal and industrial. The allocations would be based on the historic allocations defined in the agency's code, which is a 1985-89 base period. Efficiency allocation and irrigation allowance index, or IEI, would be discontinued, and all the wells would have a fixed allocation. The use of conservation credits would not be allowed in the interim system, and there'd be a ramp down over time to achieve sustainable management of the basins. Subsequent to that meeting, staff met again with ag and M&amp;I stakeholder groups, and stakeholders, especially those representing ag, had a number of concerns about the proposed 85-89 historical allocation base period for the interim allocation. Stakeholders felt that more recent period would be more representative of current land use and cropping. And additionally, many well owners over the years installed replacement wells, but they didn't go through the process, the paperwork, of transitioning their historical allocation to those replacement wells, because they were able just to go into efficiency allocation with agricultural wells. So accounting for the nearly 30 years of transfers would be a large administrative burden, both for the well owners and for agency staff. At certain points in the discussions over time, some M&amp;I representatives had suggested that the ag use the T, or the Temporary Extraction Allocation Base Period, that the M&amp;I folks are under, under ordinance E, which is 2003 to 2012, for reasons of equity and symmetry. But the T base period was relatively wet compared to recent years, and the five weather station average over GMA for that period was about 13.77 inches. Ag representatives had suggested using a more recent period because of the reasons of current land use and pumping, but this would be biased to drought pumping. For example, 2016, 2012-2016 average annual precipitation was 7.88 inches. So we are proposing a revised interim allocation base period that would take the T period and extend it to 2016. So it would be 2003 to 2016. And that covers both wet and dry years. Let's see, had I not advanced this? Sorry about that. But it basically said what I just said. So interim allocation only applies to groundwater extractions, not surface water deliveries. That was one of the points of contention, or impasses in the negotiations between the ag and M&amp;I groups. And so the base period needs to account for pumping on land that receives surface water balanced by wet and dry periods, so it kind of averages that out. And so the proposed base period, like I say, covers both of those wet and dry years, and the average annual precipitation is about 12 inches. And it's more representative of current land use and cropping, because it goes through Other allocation issues, the ag stakeholders have asked for year-to-year pumping allocation flexibility through a rolling average or some other mechanism. However, staff believes that such a program like this beyond the scope of an interim allocation plan that it was tasked with developing. Your board has expressed preference for a stakeholder-proposed allocation system, which could have that kind of flexibility built into it. So much of this is the same as we discussed in November, that the plan is to implement the new allocation, interim allocation system for the new water year, beginning October 1st, 2018. Just as a reminder, water year is October through September, and that's where our reporting period needs to shift to under the SIGMA, Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And we would transition to the interim allocation system following the current reporting schedule, which ends June 30th for domestic and M&amp;I pumpers, and July 31st for ags. There's a bit of a little transition months there before October 1st. And to have an ordinance ready for July 1st, which is when the first current reporting period ends, we would have to bring the ordinance to you to be adopted no later than May, the May meeting. And if the stakeholders are successful in coming to a resolution and bringing a proposal for an allocate, a different allocation system, we would need to receive that by the end of February in order to have a proper review, bring it to you for your review and public review, and have it, put it into code language to be adopted by the May meeting. So that's the main purpose of this item today, is to tell you that we are proposing a change to the base period. Everything else about the interim allocation system we presented at the November meeting would remain the same. We are going to have a public meeting on January 18th at 6:30 PM at the Rio Vista Middle School to talk about all the elements of the interim plan and receive stakeholder comments on that. And so at this time, we're requesting your board give us any feedback it has and receive and file this report.
Thank you. Comments, questions from members of the board?
We have no comments.
I'll do those after. Okay, sure, okay. One question with respect to the interim plan. Any thought given to defining how interim the plan is? I mean, I understand that initially the concept was the interim plan would last until the stakeholders came up with a consensus substitute plan, understanding that that might be more difficult than originally anticipated. You know, one of the concerns that I've heard is that this interim plan may become semi-permanent if you run into a lot of difficulties in the stakeholder groups. Any thought to putting a fuse on it or limiting the lifespan of the interim plan?
Well, I don't know that staff really thought putting an expiration date on it necessarily made sense. I don't think we want to change plans too frequently. That could be confusing. And if we don't have a stakeholder-proposed system that is acceptable to your board in time before this gets implemented and goes into effect principally in October, I think that we need to continue on that system for a year reporting period. But if it, if the stakeholders are able to come together and come up with a better system that they think would be better for a permanent system, then we would go through it and implement it the following year, I think would be the, would make the most sense, but...
Director West, if I could, I'd just like to offer a thought on that, because I've heard the same concern. I think the important thing is that we communicate that we really are open to it being an interim plan, that we're open to it changing. I think it would be a mistake to say, "It's going to end and we'll have nothing."
Oh, no, no.
And I'm not suggesting that you're suggesting that. And so what do you do if there isn't something better that comes along? I think you have to keep it, but I think you have to make a commitment that there would be some regular review. I don't know what that time period, but we will definitely schedule and review and discuss this and say, "Is there something better?" So it's, the important thing is that we genuinely, we communicate a genuine commitment to saying, "We're not going to say to people, 'Sorry, we did that and we're not interested in doing that.'" That's the important thing. Then if the stakeholders come up with something, great, but as you said, stakeholders have had a lot of time, and they're finding it much more difficult to do that. They're finding it difficult, they're the people that are going to criticize whatever we come up with. So it's hard to imagine that if they can't come up with something they agree with, that they're going to agree with anything that staff comes up with. But the bottom line is, we have to have something. We have to get started. And to the extent that we're both fair in, you know, what we're trying to do in terms of starting, and also fair in our commitment to it really being reviewable, is, would be the key thing, I think, that we'd want to try to do. And not just reviewable, but we would like to have something better, if we can get it. That's a fine commitment, but it's got to be better. And it also has to be supportable by people. I think that's going to be difficult.
Chair, I'm sorry. Chair West, one other point I probably should have made in this discussion we've talked about before, is stakeholders have requested, and staff agrees, and your board has essentially made comments, they agrees, to start out with as we move into the new allocation system. We would start at pumping for the first year, essentially where it was at, not make any sudden changes, but start ourselves on the path for reduction so we can get to where we need to be. So I think it's important to point that out to anybody who might be in the audience who hasn't heard some of the previous discussions. So I don't think we're going to roll this in and drop off 20% on day one. That's not, I don't think anybody's intent.
Thank you. Kim, Alden?
I have a question for staff. I see an inherent conflict here between what you're getting back from some of the stakeholders and a policy that this board has already undertaken. And that has to do with the ability to have a carryforward, or, God forbid, use the word credits, in order to have a rolling average here in order for wet and dry cycles, and how that conflicts with having a water market. Does there need to be a policy statement from the board here as to which our preference is, is to support the water market, or to be able to allow for the accrual of unpumped water for dry season? They seem to work against each other.
Well, I think that the proposals that both the Oxnard and Pleasant Valley stakeholders, the ag stakeholders in particular, and as well as the La Sposas folks, would, the kind of carryforward or rolling average looks a lot different and would eliminate a lot of the problems that may have occurred with past credit systems. But that's one of the reasons, not everything is completely figured out, there's a lot of, we want to make sure there's no unanticipated consequences to any of these, and that's one of the reasons why, for what's, we hope is really an interim allocation system, we don't have a long-term carryforward of different things. Now, in terms of conflict with the market, we've heard different things. Certainly Matthew Finup has expressed some concern about that. We've heard from others that maybe that isn't such a concern. We know that in the Santa Paula basin, they do have a market, and they do have a rolling average, and they seem to have accomplished that. And so, but that's one of the things, at such time that someone is proposing that, we're not proposing that today, then I think that is something that your board needs to weigh in and have some certainty and understanding of the ramifications of adopting one or the other, or whether they can both work together.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board comments? Questions from the public? Questions or comments from members of the public?
Afternoon, Chair West, members of the board. Jared Bouchard, General Manager with Pleasant Valley County Water District. I appreciate staff's comments and looking at this. I appreciate staff's comments and looking at this to try and avoid unanticipated outcomes or consequences. And one of the key components in the initial interim allocation plan that was presented said that you guys weren't going to deal with surface water. Here, there was some comment that surface water will have to be addressed, and that is key to many stakeholders in Pleasant Valley, in particular represents just about 30% of the irrigatable acreage out here, and has been a significant purveyor of surface water, whether it be from United or other relationships. And when we take that entire period, and particularly the adjustment from using 2003 to 2016, there were years where Pleasant Valley took almost zero extractions, and those were all done for the benefit of the basin, where we took that surface water. So if any interim plan that takes into account those years, and a significant chunk of those years, that does not provide credit, is going to adversely impact those folks, not only in the Pleasant Valley service area, but the PTP, as far as what they're left with in the way of extractions. And further complicate the issue is, there is no surface water today to make up for that. We would certainly like to take it when it's available in lieu of pumping, but today we don't even have that. So if we're left with an extraction allocation that is less than that, that takes into account the surface water deliveries, you're going to take one-third of the irrigatable acreage and significantly disadvantage those property owners specifically in the area. So I just hope that part of your policy decision, as you direct staff to move forward, is that you understand the importance of that surface water calculation in there, or perhaps looking at it differently where we look at those areas that have had surface water extraction, and maybe they need to be carved out and dealt with a little differently. We just ask for some direction on your board, that you understand the importance of that. And as you said, Director Bennett, I don't think we're going to find anything, that everybody's going to walk in here and be cheering you guys. Unfortunately, I don't think you're going to get balloons and poppers out for anything. But at least we're not disadvantaging folks with an unintended consequence by only looking at extractions. So that's going to be a key component to any long-term allocation plan or interim allocation plan. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Chair West and directors of the board, I apologize, I think I went, my name is Alden Broome, I'm with Broome Ranches, and I think I went to the same party as Kim over the holidays. But I did draft a letter to communicate my comments with respect to this item, and I hope that you've received it and get a chance to review it. But I want to follow on what Jared said about, we have had a lot of meetings with representatives of the M&amp;I community, and we've agreed to keep surface water separate in our 60-40 split, but there are unintended effects associated with who has received that water and how it is reflected in groundwater extraction history. So if we use these base periods and the surface water that has been delivered and has been included in the water use on certain lands is not, does not return, or is not incorporated into a period of years or an averaging, as I have mentioned in the letter, what it leaves those landowners with is extreme shortfall during dry periods, and then perhaps adequate supply during wet periods, when the surface water supplies come back. So I know it's a bit out of the purview of the GMA to deal directly with surface water, but if we are looking at annual allocations for groundwater, and, you know, which has been, in those surface water regions, PTP and PV explicitly, you know, it's represented 70% of the water that's been used is groundwater, 30% is surface water. So we're 30% short in dry years, which then we've been able to bank water and pump it, you know, because we've worked with averages and credits in the past. You know, in my, the mutual that I manage, we pump about, we serve about a 4,000 acre feet of water a year. Some of that is surface water. If I'm short 30%, that's 1,200 acre feet, and I have to, if I have to pump that and pay surcharges against it because it's not reflected in my average, that's about a $2 million fine. So, you know, I urge you to consider, I know that credits are the third rail in a lot of these conversations, but we need an ability to average these weather cycles in agriculture. So thank you for considering my case.
Thank you. Alden, by the way, I want to thank you for the letter. It was one of the, one of the most well-reasoned, well-written letters I've received on this subject or any other on this board. Thanks very much. But before you go, I've got a couple of questions for you.
Again, also, I'd like to thank you, it was a very well-written letter, but a couple of questions that did come up with it, and what you've said and what Jared has also said. There are also M&amp;I purveyors that purchased imported water and did not pump their wells, Crestview being one of them, during that period of time. Should we also be able to get credit for that water that we brought in and that we did not pump, same as your surface water that went down PTP and you did not pump?
Well, I think what, where I see the solution being is if you are given an allocation that's, that you're able to use, you know, with carryforward or a credit, and that allocation is a groundwater allocation, but you're able to average it over a long period of time, and surface water, you know, comes back into the, comes back to the users or the people that have the appropriate turnouts, then you're able to solve that problem. You don't necessarily need to give a groundwater credit to that person for taking the supply. That supply may, may come back. It should come back, if it's imported or if it's part of the United program. And if it doesn't, and then, you know, I, what I'm hoping to avoid in the agricultural community is where you have a certain segment of landowners or operators who had, who did the right thing and took the surface water, just as maybe Crestview Mutual did. They shouldn't be disadvantaged relative to their neighbors, because they did what was better for the basin. So I, you know, I think what we need to look at is a longer period, where you have a rolling average, or a, or an ability to carryforward, or perhaps even borrow, because we know this weather cycle is going to continue to affect ag, and we want to be able to, you know, conserve the water in the wet period and rely on the reserve or the surplus in the dry period.
So do you agree with staff's offer, then, between the 2003 through the 2016 period as your longer period that incorporates a wet and dry cycle?
Well, you know, I guess when it's combined with an annual allocation, I disagree with it. You know, if we're given an annual allocation, you know, we don't, I think of my house where our sprinklers, you know, they may be set on a timer, right, where we run a certain amount of time per day, or, and you would, and that, you see in the M&amp;I water use, it's fairly flat year to year. But when you look at agricultural water use, when it rains, people turn off their wells or they use surface supplies. So there's much more oscillation in water use during wet periods and dry periods. So I guess, the problem I have is, I don't like the base period, because I think it represents, you know, there was an abundance of water that came off of free man diversion. We know that's challenged, and I know Tony Morgan will probably speak to that in the following item. It also, there's also water that came out of Cane Hill Creek, which I think is a separate item that's going to have to be dealt with independent, I think, of this conversation. But that, that history may not look like the future. You know, so we, we need to work on that together. But the, my real problem is, is when you have, if you say you get an X amount of water per year, which say you get an X amount of water per year, which you're not able to bank, and you're not able to, you know, utilize what you've, you know, or carry that balance forward, you start having to manage to a number, and we just have not seen that in the data. You know, ag has been low, we, ag's water use in general in the Oxnard PV basins, the extractions oscillate somewhere between sixty-five thousand acre feet, save the drought, where there's been no surface water, and forty thousand. There's a huge oscillation based on the surface water that's been available and the weather. So, I think MNI's been less. So, I guess my point is, in order to accommodate that, the market doesn't solve it in, on an annual basis, because everyone's short or everyone's long. And I, and I think that's, you know, like in Santa Paula, where you're able to smooth it over a moving average, and you trade, you true up after the, the average has been established. I think that, that works. So, long answer to your question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Rob Saperstein for the City of Oxnard. I went to a different party. I threw out my back, and so, I'm hobbling around. Been a rough year for, for folks.
Yours had the limbo?
Excuse me?
Your party had the limbo?
Oh, I wish it was something fun. I don't know. It's old age, more than anything. I want to restate what I understand the proposed, staff's proposed approach is, so that I make sure that I understand and maybe describe the issue a little bit differently for the board. The, this rolling, so, maybe, maybe the yes is first. Yes to the sense of urgency on timing, I think Kim and Jeff have described what needs to happen as quickly as possible. We need to hit that October first date for an allocation system. That means either there's a staff-driven plan that folks will have input on, or the stakeholders will come with some variation on a theme. But, it's essential, we get this boat moving, and I'll have the same comments on the, move it, move forward on the Sigma Plan itself. Priority one is getting a replenishment assessment discussion moving forward, so that we can productively get more forms of supplemental water into the basin, so that we suffer fewer reductions in availability of water supply. I think staff's proposal is, whatever yield number we're going to start with at the get-go, a hundred thousand acre feet, give or take, that's going to be divided sixty percent ag, forty percent to MNI, and the issue of the base period is a sub-allocation issue. Whatever that start number is, call it a hundred thousand, easy math, forty thousand goes to MNI, and those MNI users have to subdivide that allocation. And if they don't have a consensus on that subdivision, then staff will use that base period, whatever it is the board ultimately decides, if it's two thousand and three to two thousand and sixteen, or whatever other vintage of base period, that will be staff's fault unless the stakeholders come up with a proposal differently. And what the ag community is expressing concern over is, and MNI folks are supportive both for ag and for themselves, is the subtlety in that sub-allocation problem. Having it a year-to-year fixed number creates headaches for everyone. So, City of Oxnard pumps ten acre feet above its whatever number it's been, and it's lived with this now since emergency ordinance E's been adopted. It's immediately into penalty. Having some buffer for the MNI folks is just as important as ag, but for somewhat different reasons. But, the concern that ag is expressing is that sub-allocation problem, give them a fixed number, and it doesn't account for the variation in hydrologic cycle. And MNI is supportive of some form of rolling average, or, or a five-year moving period, something that gives every pumper some breathing room to have some ability to deal with variations in their, their planning and differential demand during different hydrologic cycles. For staff to ignore that issue in a proposal to the board, I think is really short-sighted. Though, it makes it harder, but it's really short-sighted to not provide, embed in whatever the proposal is, some flexibility to deal with variability and availability of water supply. But, that's a sub-allocation issue. To call it a surface water issue is, is, ignores really, that is a much bigger problem. Ag demand changes significantly from wet to dry periods irrespective of whether surface water is available or not. And, and to give them a fixed number is crazy-making and doesn't get solved by the water market itself. There are some other details that I think the, whether it's staff or stakeholder proposed ordinance, has to include in, in, and I wouldn't call it an interim plan. It's a allocation system for as long as it lasts. Until version number two and version number three come along, it will be the allocation system. We never expected emergency ordinance E to last now that it's been three, four years. It's, it's going to stay in place until something else takes its place. That's the reality. And so far this year is not a happy year. If we weren't having this Sigma discussion, we'd likely be talking about more, perhaps even more severe reductions on the emergency ordinance E allocation. The last piece that I'd like to comment on is, the oddness of the base period now for MNI folks includes twenty percent reductions from adoption of emergency ordinance E into twenty sixteen. So, their use is artificially reduced even further during that same period, because of emergency ordinance E, those reductions weren't imposed on ag. So, there are so many variables that make it difficult to create a, some sense of equitable approach to this. I'm not, that's, maybe the best I can say is, that sub-allocation problem gets neutralized as best as possible by having some sort of moving average for all users. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else?
Good afternoon. For the record, Lucy McGovern, City of Camarillo. I would echo Rob Saperstein's comments related to the staff's proposal. But, one of the things that I, a couple of things that I did want to point out is that the base period, and another form of explaining it, as far as what Rob was saying, is that two of those years, everyone was operating under the ordinance E scheme, and, and twenty percent of that was met, the cutbacks were met by MNI, and for some reason or another, I don't know what the specifics are, two of those years, the agricultural community was not able to meet the cutbacks under ordinance E. So, that artificially gives them additional water or percentage split that was not originally taken into account. The other issue that I wanted is, and it's more logistical, is that currently, under the reporting periods, or at least the reporting system, is that MNI directly reports what they pump, and that's what our allocation is. And, on the other side, agriculturals are either through pumping allocation or through an ag efficiency program. And if we're going to be going through this new allocation scheme, not sure whether your reporting system, computerized reporting system can accommodate the ag efficiency portion of the, so, I don't know how that's going to get translated into how the new scheme is going to be, and is that going to cause a delay to making it effective? If you're, if you're making the new program effective October first, because of a computer or how you're accounting for it, is that going to be another six-month delay? So, that is going to be a problem, because we're, we're trying to, you know, get under sustainability as quickly as we can, and so, now we've kind of thrown in another wrench into it. So, bottom line is, we all know that we are going to have to change our way of operating and how we pump, and we need to come to some sort of a consensus, even though we're not going to be happy a hundred percent, but at least something that's workable would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Jürgen?
Jürgen Gramco, a grower in Oxnard. I just wanted to comment on Lucy's comment, which was to say that because the municipal community was under a hard twenty percent cut during the TEA period, and ag was under the IAA, that that house somehow skews the relationship between ag and MNI during this extended period, this two thousand and three to two thousand and sixteen period, now includes a couple of years of, of the TEA in it. That all goes away with the sixty forty split. It's, it's like Rob says, it has more to do with sub-allocations than it does the bigger picture. And to echo some of the comments of my agricultural peers, I agree, it's absolutely necessary that we have some kind of flexibility to roll from wet to dry, vice versa.
Thank you. Kim, anything further?
Chair West, board, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Gramco said there. The, the base period is just for splitting up the allocation, sub-splitting it within the ag sector and within the MNI sector. The, the proposal is sixty percent of the total allowed pumping would go to ag, and forty percent to MNI, regardless of what the base period is. That's just for how, within those sectors, it's divided up. So, I thank him for making that clarification.
Questions or comments from the board?
I guess, excuse me a minute. I didn't go to a New Year's Eve party, so I don't know what I have. I'm not clear on distinction here. I think what Lucy's point was, that if we're starting with sixty forty, when one group had, during three years, had twenty percent less, and the other group didn't, that skews it, the total number you're, you're doing your sixty forty split with.
Well, one of the significant, okay.
The sixty forty split didn't rely on this base period. It relied on a number, excuse me, it relied on a number of other factors, and it was a consensus achieved with the group. So, that's, that's the distinction to be made. That's what Kim's trying to say.
Okay.
Thank you. I've got, I do want to point out, MNI did cut twenty percent, and MNI has expressed frustration about, ag has not cut twenty percent, because they've been on, on the emergency ordinance E, efficiency allocation side of it and stuff. I agree with Mr. Gramco on that it doesn't affect the sixty forty. But, it is a fair question to say, when and who is going to cut, you know, in terms of moving forward, and MNI can fairly ask the question, if MNI is cutting, should there be some cuts? There is no plan, I mean, in government policies, there's no plan that has all winners and no losers. There's no plan that's not going to call for, you know, some pain, you know, as we go forward. So, I appreciate people are coming today and saying, there's something wrong with this plan. But, I would offer to everybody, we stopped and said, you know, we know this is really an important plan. We invited people, give us a better plan, give us whatever plan, design it. I mean, we have been really patient, asking stakeholders to try to design it, and they have run into the same problem that a government agency up here would be running into, which is, there's tension, there's, there's, there's a problem. And the tension that gets, can get left out is the tension of the public's interest in starting the process of getting the pumping from the basin under control. And so, we hear this, this constantly, you know, we don't want cuts now, we need flexibility, and the fundamental question is, is simply this, what cut is going to take place, who's going to do it, and when are they going to do it? And, what people want to do is keep kicking the wind so far down the road that we are not being responsible to the general public in terms of making progress. Nobody is talking about saying, we're going to go and do the dramatic cut next year. But, I have this, this question. The, if you, if you go so far down the road, we're shirking our responsibility that we have as an agency, which is different than saying, we want to try to find a way where nobody has to take any cuts. The, we want to get going. So, I'm very open. I mean, I, I really have grown to appreciate this process, where people can get up and talk, and, and we don't put the fixed time limit on you and everything. We really want to hear, right? But, come up with a better plan, but don't come up with just a criticism of one part of this plan. That doesn't solve the problem. You've got to come up with, and so, I know some people have said to our staff, you got it, we can't solve it, it's yours, you know? You go take, you go take all the heat. Oh, okay, so, we've got to take the heat. We, but, when we go to take the heat, we can do it by saying, we asked everybody else. You know, you got one you're willing to take the heat on? One that solves the problem somehow, some logical way, and you're willing to take the heat on? And we've had a big, no, that's not a criticism, it just tells you how hard it is. And it tells you, we've got to make a hard decision. So, give us not a criticism of a part of this plan that doesn't tell us something better, but give us something better. And to the extent that there is tension, because there is not flexibility built into year to year, should be a good incentive for people to say, come up with something better for us. Do that, all right? The sooner you come up with something better that everybody can say, that's better. But, it won't be something that, it can't be something that kicks the can down so far down the road that we, that we, we make the win to the point where we're irresponsible. It can't be something that you can't say is genuinely better. So, there is some flexibility built into this at the beginning, and that flexibility is, we're not starting with the big cut. We're starting with a hundred thousand pumping instead of going to sixty. So, that by itself has some flexibility built into it. It doesn't have year-to-year flexibility built into it, but you start to build year-to-year flexibility into it. And I think we all know, that's the slippery slope of credits. And so, you've got to do that very cautiously, you've got to do it very carefully, you've got to do it very thoughtfully. I'm open to it, but it's got to be done properly. And we, I think, are appropriate in starting with this and saying, don't come up with something better, this is where we're going to go in October of twenty eighteen, because we have a responsibility. The final things that I would just like to say, Rob brought up a couple of things that I want to respond to. He says, you know, Oxnard could be ten acre feet over and be in penalty. That's not the end of the world. It's a penalty, you know? It's, it's, yeah, you didn't make it, you're ten acre feet over. So, it was important enough to you to go over, okay, but they also could have done something to have their citizens consume less water, or an ag grower could say, even though we're starting at a hundred thousand, I've got to go over now. But, in a few, in a number of years, nobody's going to be able to take sixty percent of a hundred thousand and keep pumping it. So, when do we start to have the, you know, make the, make the hard decisions? The second thing that Rob said is, if we didn't have this whole sustainability plan, we'd be fighting like tooth and nail right now, particularly with the potential for another extension of the drought here, about what are we going to replace emergency ordinance E with? We would not be sitting here saying, we're just going to kick the can down the road and keep this groundwater pumping. We're not doing that. We're not fighting about how you get rid of emergency ordinance E, because we say, we've been saying for years, we're just about ready to do this, so we shouldn't do that. We can't have it both ways. We can't postpone dealing with a broken emergency ordinance E by saying, it's because we're on the cusp of doing something, and then get right to the cusp and keep saying, well, we're not going to do something, we're not going to do something. So, I think, I hope there's something better, but this is the best that I've seen so far for a true plan to get us started that that leaves an incentive for everybody to say, "Come up with something better overall." Sorry for being long-winded about that, but it's obviously the rub of everything that we do here and so my thoughts have been pretty... I've been thinking about this a lot, so thank you.
A question for you, Kim, for clarification. If the stakeholders are unable to come up with anything before the end of February or something for us to consider on the February agenda, your plan would be that this interim plan, as it is written and presented today, would come back on May, in the May meeting for the first reading for possible adoption and the June meeting for effectiveness in, on October 1st?
Yes, that would be the latest. I mean, we could bring it earlier and, I mean, if your board directed some modifications based on, you know, whatever your board's desire, based on what you hear, I mean, we would make, we would make every effort to incorporate that into what we brought you. But that's the time schedule we're looking at is, is we need to have it by the May meeting in order to have the ordinance adopted in time to move forward to it. So whatever, if there are things that your board decides wants to be modified, we'd have to have them within time. In terms of a whole stakeholder-produced proposal, that's where we figure we would, it would take about that much time to air it to your board and the public and get it codified in the right language and brought to your board. So that's the reason for that time schedule.
Okay. Follow-up question to that is, I may now look at counsel as to whether or not I can ask this question or whether he can answer it. Would that be the same timeline also for the L-PUG allocation plan that is currently being reviewed and knocked about it with staff?
Well, just generally speaking, what's driving the deadline for adoption of an ordinance is that it would not go into effect for 30 days from the date of adoption. This, for the OPV allocation system, it's a little interesting because it would not be fully implemented until October 1, which would, could mean that you'd have until August to adopt that ordinance, but I believe staff's proposal is to have a transition period starting with the July 1 pumping date. So that's where the May deadline comes from. So to answer your question, whenever the board wants the allocation system to go into effect, you count back the 30 days from the adoption of the ordinance and that's, that's your deadline for the new system.
My question, okay. The reason why I'm asking that question is because in the L-PUG plan that we have reviewed and that we've talked about and was brought up in the letter from Alden today was the idea of a five-year or seven-year rolling average in L-PUG and it would seem reasonable that that same component of the plan, if it could be transplanted and also put into this interim plan, would be a rather easy fit. But given the length of time that has gone on, I don't know where the L-PUG allocation plan is at at this point. If the other group has contributed anything, is it dead, is it alive? Are we starting off at A again? So that's why I was asking, is that even around? Can I talk about it or ask these questions under this issue since it has nothing to do with L-PUG per se? And ask staff to respond.
Well, while you can't have a discussion about the proposed Los Poses Valley allocation system, but just in terms of the process of adopting an allocation system, you can have that general discussion.
Okay.
And Mr. Rani, I would suggest that we could come back on the January 24th, the regular meeting in January and give you an update on that process.
Thank you.
Well, a lot of what I was going to say has been said, but I just wanted to remind people that it was last, last February, I think it was, when we said, you know, to our staff, maybe it was a year ago February, we said, "We're going to have to do something." And we gave a deadline for MNI and Ag in the Oxnard Plain Pleasant Valley area to bring us something that they could agree on enough for us to pass it. When that didn't happen, we said, we gave last June, our meeting at last June as the meeting by which we had to have it or staff was supposed to bring us something. Staff brought us something later in the year, but my understanding when we gave that direction to staff was, "Give us something that nobody's going to be happy with and this is going to be an incentive for them to really get in together and then bring us something that they have agreed on." And so I am hearing that nobody's happy with it. I hope that that's your incentive to go top each other and bring us something that you can live with.
It's my understanding, directors, that these groups of Ag and MNI have come great distance in their discussions and the fact that they've agreed to the 60-40 split and have come to a... Yes, it's not perfect for everybody. We didn't expect it to be, but I think we should respect that agreement and not get in the middle of it. We've got a situation where folks have come from very different poles and have come to some middle ground on some very key issues and I think that's important. I wanted to go back to the, to the concept of who's going to do the cutting. And there's been an unfortunate soundbite that seems to have stuck in this venue that the Ag community didn't reach its 20% goal of cutbacks. And we've heard from a number of people, people in the Oxnard Plain who very clearly presented to us with numbers and graphs and things from GMA's own data that showed the difference of the lack of surface water supply to their operations and what that meant. It's very clear what it means. When that alternative source is not available, they go to the ground. The picture that isn't very clearly painted very often, but again, we were presented with this information, is that even though there was, yes, a technical increase in pumping, your per acre application of water was still and has still been on a historical decrease for many decades and that's an important point. And that's really the point of why when we set the T in place, that we didn't insist on this hard 20% cut on Ag because we saw the information that showed that there has been a consistent decrease in pumping of water use. And it was thought at that time that Ag had done a big share of its part. Maybe it wasn't finished, yes. But to make the assertion that Ag has done no cutting is incorrect. And so I wanted to just remind everybody of that. I don't think we're necessarily hearing criticism of the plan without any suggestions. We heard the suggestion from the Ag folks and the city folks that they desire flexibility, a rolling average, a carryover or even that dreaded word, credit. Let's forget the word credit, but let's think about flexibility. We've heard that from both parties, again. And we've, and we've heard it from the L-PUG folks that they've configured a flexibility, a rollover solution in their white paper and their plan. Why would we not consider the same thing for the Oxnard Pleasant Valley group? It seems reasonable and it doesn't seem hard to do and we have some time to do it. And that seems to be the hitching, the one holdup that we're hearing, the criticism, if you will, is that perceived lack of flexibility. And farmers understand it very well and our view has to be longer. We understand that we are in wet and dry periods and we're going to have another wet period at some point. But right now, we have to think about the three, the five years, the 10 years out, particularly those who plant long-term permanent crops. You need to have a planning horizon. You need to have an idea of what's coming. Flexibility provides that. We're not talking about an endless, kind of an unknown wishy-washy thing. So I'm positive about what I've heard here and I think we're very close to staff's interim plan. I think divides things in the best equitable fashion possible at this point. I think the only addition we should consider is flexibility, adding some flexibility to this thing. Thank you.
Director West, I appreciate this is a deliberative body so we get to respond to each other and stuff and I just want to emphasize a couple of things. MNI had less surface water also and they cut their groundwater. Everybody had less surface water during this drought period and MNI cut. So, I want to get that said. The second thing, though, when you said, "Seems like what they're asking for is some flexibility and it doesn't seem like it's hard to do." I strongly disagree. It is really hard to do. That's why they haven't done it. They haven't agreed to a plan that everybody can sign off on. It is easy to grant credits. You say you don't want to use that word, but that's what you're talking about. It was easy to grant credits before when they did it and everybody said it resulted in a mess for us, right? But it was an easy way to kick the can down the road in terms of dealing with the issue and now we've got 600,000 acres of credits out there. What's hard to do is come up with a way to do flexibility or credits that doesn't recreate the same problem. I'm open to it, but somebody has got to come up with it as part of an overall plan and to sit there and say, you know, "We want you to do that" when we can't do it is, I don't think that that's appropriate. Final thing is, we're not getting in the middle of their agreement. We're taking their agreement. They agreed 60-40, we're taking their agreement. What we're doing is coming up with the one thing they haven't agreed to, which is, what is the allocation period? Somebody's got to make that decision. So I, I think it's very easy to throw credits out there or to throw, postpone the problem out there. You're right, that's easy, but hard is to try to do flexibility or credits in a way that doesn't recreate the problems that we had before. Thank you.
Director Bennett, I'm glad to hear that you're open to suggestions because I understand that's what we're going to be presented with in some short time. The groups, again, are working on a carryover program that is not kicking the can down the road. It's just actualizing a total over a, instead of a one-year definitive period of time into a three, five or seven-year period of time. I don't know what they have in mind. That's a reasonable consideration.
I want to be clear in my opening comments, I said I was open to other suggestions. I want to be clear about that.
That's excellent.
It's not a new, it's not a new comment.
My sense is that this interim allocation plan is a good start. I agree with Director Bennett. It is, it is indeed complex. But there are a number of elegant solutions out there. Marty Gramco sat at a committee meeting a while ago and laid out what I thought was a fairly simple, very elegant solution that provided some flexibility. And there are lots of others. I agree that flexibility should be part of any plan, whether that's a flexibility agenda that is generated from staff or one that's worked out long-term with the stakeholders. Obviously, that would be the best, but I would like to see, you know, at least more consideration given to some flexibility. I'm not so sure that it's outside the scope. I think it's essential to the scope if the allocation plan is going to work, particularly if it has to work long-term. I appreciate Alden's comments and his letter and I'm glad to hear that staff is willing to work with him on that, on the surface water user suballocation issue. I think that's, that's also critical to the acceptance and the success of that plan. I would, I think you mentioned there's a public outreach meeting, January 18, where some of these things can be explored. I'd also offer, there is a, an executive committee meeting on February 13. I'd be, I'd welcome the opportunity at that committee meeting to hear from the folks in the, in the OPV group who are working on flexibility options. If we could put that on the agenda and invite them, I'd be, I'd like to hear more from them. But on the whole, you know, it's a, a good starting place for allocation plan to deal with incredibly complex issues. Yeah?
If it's appropriate, just some observations from the meetings with Ag and I-PUG. First of all, I agree with 95% of everything that was said. I toss out that part about staff being shortsighted. But really, between the last meeting and this meeting, the board's direction to us was try to figure out this flexibility thing. It is not an easy thing to accomplish. And I, my own sense of it is, it won't be accomplished in the timeframe that we're laying out for. That's just my own sense of things. What it brings in is some complexities. One is, it's not that it can't be solved, but getting to an agreement with everybody and there are some simple solutions and then they get more complex as you start to discuss them. But what's happened and what I think your board would, should think about maintaining is that these people, and us, we've all come together, we've established a level of trust and, and that has worked really well towards having these difficult conversations on difficult topics and getting to the point that Director Borcher was talking about where we could split. And you want to maintain that. What we found in between last meeting and this meeting is that things are getting uncomfortable in the both communities out there for everybody because it's becoming more fractious, this idea of rolling averages and some other things. So there's been a little bit of pushback. Well, I'd like to maintain that, you know, that cooperation that we've achieved and that's the old rocking the shoe metaphor. The only one, the only appropriate one I've used in the room is, you know, if we have a rocking shoe, we'll keep it coming and you're taking it off to help work on getting it out of there, right? And so while we can revisit it, I think it's going to be lengthy and we'll bring back a report on what those issues are. You tie in the water market at that point, you tie in the surface water and you tie in MNI and Ag. And that's what makes it, when you put all those together, it, you know, and you get past that, you got really a permanent plan. But getting to the interim plan on the schedule you gave, well, we're behind the schedule you gave us already and so the second schedule we're trying to hit, you know, that's, I don't know that that's going to happen without extreme cooperation and all. So that's really all I had to say.
Thank you. Thank you. And in the short term, in terms of the current status of the -- or the current state of the allocation plan, in the short term, particularly given that the beginning of the -- of the process involves little in the way of immediate cuts, I don't see -- I don't think that flexibility is a critical issue, but in the very near future, it'll become that.
Appreciate this. And I appreciate the comments. I just want to throw examples out there about how complicated it gets, as I've been thinking about it. So, you have this flexibility period, and then we have a wet period, somebody takes surface water. And so, because they take surface water, they store up all this groundwater that they can take, and so we don't actually rest the groundwater, right? So, we don't actually get any recharge, you know. It is a complicated and difficult issue, one. Two, you talked about, you know, you think there's some simple elegant solutions out there. Emergency ordnancy sounded like an elegant solution when we adopted it, and it has been ineffective at really rating in the groundwater pumping. And even many of the pumpers are admitting it's being manipulated, it's being worked. But it sounded like an elegant solution at the time. So, you just have to be careful with elegant solutions, and I think we -- I suggest we go forward. And I don't think we -- a little bit of a change from one comment. We're not designing this to be hard so people will come back. Quite frankly, if we could design it easy and nobody had to come, that would be best. It's hard because it's hard, and it's not complete because it's hard. But it's -- because it's not complete, the burden is on people that think there's something better. Bring it to us and bring us the whole package. Thank you very much.
There's a motion to receive and file. Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number seven, even though I saw Tony walk into the room, maybe he slipped out again, but we've deferred item seven till the 24th. Is that correct? So, moving on to item number eight.
Chair West, board members, Arnie Anstom, staff to the GMA. This item came from a request of your board to begin the discussion on funding replenishment projects. My presentation's going to be at a very high level. I'm not going to go into the weeds and some details, and unfortunately, I don't have a lot of concrete answers right now on the best process to fund conceptual groundwater replenishment projects. Oh, overshot. So, there are several options for funding. There are grants, there are loans available. Grants need matching money, loans need to be paid back. So, in those cases, we'd still have to have some funds to develop replenishment projects. There's Proposition 218 and Proposition 26, which both create pathways to funding. And which option to choose, which pathway, depends on what exactly is being funded and who benefits. And each of them have different hurdles or voter approval that needs to be met. And there is an option out there that might be beyond those two. Important to point out, the authority the GMA has as a groundwater management agency, in our enabling legislation, it states the agency shall not involve itself in any activities normally and historically undertaken by its member agencies, such as construction and operation of dams, spreading grounds, pipelines, but we should limit our activities to regulating extraction of groundwater. I've been advised that this can be resolved through a determination of your board that supplemental water is needed to achieve sustainability. We are also a groundwater sustainability agency, and under Sigma, there are other authorities. GSA authorizes agencies to collect fees to fund sustainability. This can only happen after adoption of the GSP. And Sigma requires that the Proposition 218 be followed on how those fees are set and approved. And fees cannot exceed reasonable regulatory costs to the GSA. And for that case, it means we need to know what we're spending that money on before we set that fee, which means projects need to be identified. People need to know what they're going to be paying for and what they're getting for it. Now, I'm going the wrong way. There we go. As I mentioned earlier, there are not a lot of concrete answers right now. Case law is evolving on this. I'm uncertain if extraction fees are a tax subject to Prop 26. There is some case law stating that they might not be subject to Prop 218, even though Sigma says they are subject to Prop 218. And can we develop, or is it possible to develop, a user fee for a specific service that is provided by the GMA, the GSA, to pumpers? So, they are actually getting what they're paying for as a service, so it's not a tax. So, some steps needed to fund replenishment would be the determination that water is needed to achieve sustainability. Projects will need to be identified. Where is the money going to go? What is it going to pay for? An estimate of the cost of service that it's going to take to get those projects built, or regulatory activity, if we're talking about meter inspections or some kind of programmatic effort. Clear nexus between what the fee is and the benefit provided needs to be identified before any fee can be set. And then, how those costs are apportioned as well needs to be identified. Is it a fixed cost to every well? Is it volumetric, basically an extraction charge? And can it be different for different management areas? And then, when that's all outlined, then the best mechanism to get that fee approved becomes clear, and that path can then be plotted as a Prop 26, 218. Apologize again. There we go. So, my recommendation for this action is to receive this presentation and direct the fiscal committee to address the subject of funding groundwater replenishment projects.
Questions or comments from the general public or from the board?
Can you go back to your very first slide about enabling legislation?
Whoops.
When you read that off, you got to the very end there and found that if the board has a finding that supplemental water is necessary, that the district does have the ability to purchase that water? Or pay someone to purchase that water?
That's how I've been advised. I'm going to ask counsel.
Yes, this quoted passage is from the GMA's enabling legislation. What Arnie was referring to is a provision in Sigma, since there's a conflict between what GSAs are allowed to do and this provision in our statute. If your board makes the finding that replenishment activities are necessary to achieve sustainability, it can circumvent this limitation in the Enabling Act. So, that provision that he was referring to is in Sigma, not in the GMA Act.
So, monies that are collected through surcharges and through penalties by individuals or organizations that over-extract their allocation and pay those monies to us, could that be used if the finding is made by the board for that purpose?
Yes. Yes, those can be used for any purpose for which the agency is authorized to act.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, this is a -- Just this. Virtually everybody, including myself, supports and would prefer, instead of having cuts to Ag, having new water sources come available so we don't have to have the cuts. For that to happen, we've got to have sustainability fees as part of that. We also have to have good planning and lots of other good stuff happening. We have to have good staff work and everything else. But you have to have sustainability fees. You can't have sustainability fees, you can't get started on that until you have your plan, until you adopt your plan. You've got to have a groundwater sustainability plan out there to get started on the sustainability fees. If we don't want to do that, and we want to come up with reasons why we shouldn't do the plan, why we shouldn't get going, and all of that, then what we're saying is, we want to cut instead of getting new supplies of water. And I don't think that's what we want to do, but that's sort of the inherent message that has to be tied to people that don't want us to get going. Thank you.
So, we need a motion then to direct the --
Fiscal.
The fiscal committee to develop the process for funding mechanism for replenishment fees? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And this is a receive and file. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Second? Aye.
I have a quick comment, but it's just a question. Sorry. Jeanette Lombardo, Global Water Innovations. Can you tell me when the next fiscal meeting is planned or calendar?
We can.
March 18th, according to the schedule we adopted a while ago.
Okay, great. There are other funding options available, so I'll be attending and enlighten you.
Moving on then to item number nine. GSP update.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, board members. For the record, again, Kim Love, GMA staff. So, Jill Weinberger with DUDAC will give you a presentation on this here in just a moment, but I thought I would provide some background first before we get into that. So, the preliminary draft GSPs were released and put up on our website on November 21st. And along with that, we have a cover letter that really addresses what these preliminary draft GSPs are and what they are not. And what they are is a compilation of the work completed to date to provide an opportunity for stakeholders to kind of review and get up to speed with what the GSPs are, and review all the existing sections in the complete context of the whole, to start having the really difficult discussions about putting together the sustainability goals and the various other pieces. They're not at all, and were never intended, as your board understands as well, that these were not going to be Sigma-ready, to be submitted to DWR drafts. And some comments I've seen kind of suggest that folks may be not understanding the purpose of these drafts and the reason that they were released. So, today, we'll be asking you to open up a public comment period, and then we'll talk about following the public comment period and the other steps that need to be taken, including some board workshops that we're going to suggest that you have to delve into some of the more technical aspects after the presentation, and Jill introduces you to the GSPs.
Good afternoon. I am Jill Weinberger with DUDAC. I am generally healthy, and I'm not here to talk about credits. So, I think once we've kicked that off, we're good. I am going to talk to you today about the draft, the preliminary draft groundwater sustainability plans. And while I'm going to present an overview of what's in these plans, I'm not going to get into the details. I am going to try primarily to focus on the areas where additional stakeholder and board input is needed to move forward. So, with that, I think this summarizes a lot of what Kim has already said. We delivered the plans for Oxnard, Pleasant Valley, and the Los Poses Valley basins on November 21st. They are preliminary drafts. They are not intended to go to DWR at this point in time. They are intended, exactly as Kim said, to compile information into a document where everyone can begin to see the work that's been done so far, and to set the stage for discussions moving forward. So, they do present the background information that has been compiled from a number of different sources. So, that was taken from disparate sources, put into one place, so everybody has it here. They include estimates of the historical sustainable yield. That is not the future sustainable yield, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. And they provide a framework for the ongoing stakeholder engagement and discussions. Before these go to DWR, before anything else is done, additional stakeholder input is required, and I think we all acknowledge that. So, what is in the draft? The reason I should point out here, the reason that we have three bullets up here and four down here is that these first three bullets, the administrative information, the hydrogeologic conceptual model, and the current conditions sections, these have all been published in pieces through the process of developing these preliminary draft GSPs. So, those first three bullets have gone through TAG review, and the majority of the TAG comments have been addressed. Where TAG comments haven't been addressed, we've been in communication with TAG to finalize those. So, that's a little bit of an ongoing process. But those first three, administrative information is the background information. It's spelled out in Sigma legislation, what needs to be in that section. The hydrogeologic conceptual model, that's a discussion of what's the geology underlying the basins? How does that interact with groundwater in the basins? Where are there barriers to groundwater flow? Where are there conduits for flow? Just the basic, again, understanding at a conceptual level without numbers, how these basins work hydrogeologically. And the current conditions for each sustainability indicator. So, groundwater levels through time, ensuring that we've collected all of the groundwater elevation data that are available out there, looking at groundwater quality data, subsidence, seawater intrusion, all of the sustainability indicators, the current conditions. And like I said, these sections have been through TAG review and TAG comments, and comments have been addressed, and now they're just being included again as part of the whole GSP, preliminary draft GSP. These sections down here, historical water budget, the estimated historical sustainable yield, the framework as far as what is significant and unreasonable, what are the measurable objectives and the interim milestones, and the monitoring network, these have been discussed extensively at TAG meetings. There's been no written draft of these sections for you to review or for TAG to review until this preliminary draft came out in November. So, those -- I should go back here. Because there had been no written draft of these bullets, these are going to be the four bullets that I'm going to focus on moving forward. So, starting with the historical water budget, we certainly have talked on a number of occasions about what are the components of the water budget. That's included in this. I think the previous times, we've spoken about the historical water budget. There was ongoing work to refine some of the estimates in the water budget. That work occurred before we presented the draft in November. So, we've got in the historical water budget, sources of water supply, including surface water, a number of the sources that we've been discussing all day this afternoon, surface water flows, groundwater pumping, imported and recycled water. Also, the baseline and historical analysis of the different water budget components. What are the inflows and outflows to these basins? Have we accounted for all of that? It also includes a discussion, and I'm going to use the term baseline here because it's as defined under Sigma. When I talk about baseline, I'm talking about 2015 conditions. So, even though my children are very excited that it is now 2018, we understand that the baseline for Sigma is 2015. And estimates of the historical sustainable yield come out of the water budget in some cases. The last bullet here is a discussion of uncertainty. That is discussed in -- it's discussed in the preliminary draft GSPs, and I bring it up because I think as part of Sigma and as part of DWR's understanding, there is a certain amount of analysis that has to go into the GSPs that will be delivered to DWR, but that no GSP that goes into DWR, no matter how much data you have, no matter how long you've been analyzing it, no GSP will have a precise number in it for a water budget. These water budgets will have some uncertainty included in them. And so, there is a discussion of that uncertainty. We've identified uncertainty in the plan, and we feel that the methods used to identify that uncertainty have provided a level of discussion of the water budget that can be used moving forward as far as the historical water budget is concerned. What else is in these drafts? Well, we've got the estimated historical sustainable yield. It's a safe yield, really, when we're talking about this scenario F. I can't recall whether that's been discussed at this board before, but this was a United Water Conservation District model scenario where all of the pumping in the Four Bay, in the Oxnard Plain, in Pleasant Valley, was reduced by 50%. And the intent of this was to get at what the historical sustainable yield would be in order to achieve the target water levels at the coast to prevent seawater intrusion. And so, this is just, and it had to be done, I should say, under Sigma, without any projects. So, this is a theoretical approach to what the historical sustainable yield would have had to be. So, the thing to keep in mind here, there are no projects included in this scenario. It's simply a straight 50% haircut. And the other thing to keep in mind is that it still includes surface water diversions at the 1985 to 2015 rates. Moving forward, I think we all understand there's uncertainty in what the future rate of diversion will be. In this scenario, there was a net flow of water from the land toward the Pacific Ocean. In other words, there was not inflow of seawater into the basin on a net basis. So, that's looking over all of the aquifer systems. Under this scenario, there was still a small net sea flow, excuse me, net flow of seawater into the lower aquifer system, but the outflow from the upper aquifer system was larger than the inflow to the lower aquifer system. So, if there were a project or a management action taken to shift some of the pumping, then that would actually result overall in no seawater intrusion. So, there could be minor tweaks to this, to have no seawater intrusion in any part of the basin. Here, we have just the water levels for the Oxnard aquifer, showing this scenario F, where at the coast, they achieve in Oxnard, in the Oxnard Plain, positive 20 feet above 20 feet above. mean sea level. For the same scenario, if we look at the Fox Canyon aquifer, there are areas, particularly in the Magoo Lagoon area, that are still below sea level, and United can probably better address the details of this, but the target water levels in that area, in the Fox Canyon aquifer, are actually about minus 18.5 feet sea level because of some faulting offshore that they have found reduces the flow of water directly into the Fox Canyon aquifer from seawater, that the seawater intrusion in that area is actually through the upper aquifer system, not the lower aquifer system. For the Los Poses Valley Basin, when you get to the estimated historical sustainable yield, the approach is a little bit different because we don't have a numerical groundwater model available yet, and I say yet, in that basin, and we didn't have one available for the November 21st preliminary draft. So that baseline historical yield, historical sustainable yield was based in the West Los Poses on a combination of the infiltration modeling that was done and components of the water balance approach that got us our historical sustainable yield for West Los Poses. For East Los Poses, it's based on a scaled version of the infiltration modeling to account for understanding of where recharge tends to occur in that basin, typically along the Royal Los Poses. United is currently calibrating the numerical groundwater model for the West Los Poses Basin. And although I didn't go to the meeting, there was a meeting recently where there's been a tremendous amount of project progress made from Intera and the other folks in Los Poses towards a groundwater model for the East Los Poses Basin. So we're anticipating that as those results become available, those will be incorporated into future drafts. With the sustainable yield, we also discussed the proposed, and I really want to emphasize here, proposed minimum thresholds and milestones. And the reason that I'm emphasizing proposed is that this is really where the basin stakeholders and the board, everybody involved, gets to have a say and influence how these basins will be managed going into the future. And that's written into Sigma, where Sigma says that the minimum thresholds are, in fact, the numeric values used to define undesirable results. And undesirable results are defined at the local level. So that is for the groups in this room to work out. The proposed minimum thresholds, based on discussions with TAG and others, come out of the modeling efforts, and they also come out of the understanding of how seawater intrusion occurs, particularly in Oxnard. This is a table that I do not expect you or want you to read. This is just an excerpt from the GSPs. And the main point here is that in the upper aquifer system, in the Oxnard Basin, the proposed minimum threshold is six feet above mean sea level at the coast as a water level elevation to prevent seawater intrusion in the upper aquifer system. For the lower aquifer system, you've got some thresholds for the Wainimi at 18 and a half feet above mean sea level, same with the Fox in the Wainimi area. In Point Magoo area, we're looking at minus 20 feet as a threshold for those Fox Canyon wells in that specific area. This is also going to be used to develop interim milestones, so we've got to remember that this is a 20-year process. These are the goals after 20 years, but DWR will want to see progress towards those goals, and that progress will be reported on a five-year time period. So there will be interim milestones to show progress towards that goal. And I will emphasize yet again that this is where stakeholder and board input is needed to move forward with these plans. In Pleasant Valley, the proposed minimum thresholds are a little bit different because it's not driven to the same degree as Oxnard is by seawater intrusion. So in this case, significant and unreasonable in the proposed minimum thresholds is based on an inability of the groundwater elevations to recover after a drought period. So the minimum thresholds proposed so far in Pleasant Valley are, in fact, the historical water level lows, and that is proposed for chronic lowering of groundwater levels, reduction in groundwater storage, and subsidence. At this time, the GSP does not have proposed minimum thresholds in Pleasant Valley for groundwater, surface water interaction, or degraded water quality. That does not mean that these don't happen in the basin. In fact, we do see that there is degraded water quality in the Pleasant Valley Basin. The concern at this time is that there's not a strong link between groundwater production and degraded water quality in that basin. And so there are many questions to wrestle with moving forward as to how controlling groundwater production could influence water quality and how that would be written into one of these plans. The same is, a similar thing is true for groundwater, surface water interaction. There, we actually just lack data. There are not very many wells that can be used to look at how groundwater production influences surface water. So moving forward, that would be a data gap that's identified and could be filled with subsequent plans. And there is no specific minimum threshold proposed for seawater intrusion in this basin because there is no direct seawater intrusion into the Pleasant Valley Basin. That is not to say that production from Pleasant Valley doesn't influence Oxnard and seawater intrusion in the Oxnard Plain. It does. The groundwater modeling has shown that. But through coordination with TAG, the intent at this time would be to have a coordination agreement between the basins to handle how production would be reduced in Pleasant Valley in order to ensure that there's not also seawater intrusion in Oxnard.
So although there's not direct seawater intrusion into Pleasant Valley, if there isn't a tie to the minimum standards in the Fox Canyon Basin, then, I mean, there has to be some kind of relationship, the coordination agreement has to have some kind of relationship to that, doesn't it?
That's correct. Yeah, the coordination would have that.
And so there would be minimum standards in the coordination agreement.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then, but, this is still open, right? I mean, these are not final drafts, and so this is for discussion still, and they can be revised as necessary. There is stakeholder and board input still required before these go out. Los Poses is similar to Pleasant Valley as far as the significant and reasonable. It's based on an inability of groundwater levels to recover after drought. The minimum thresholds, again, for chronic lowering of groundwater levels, reduction in storage, subsidence, and groundwater, surface water interaction are the historical water level lows for that basin. Again, in this, and we have more information in that basin on the interaction between groundwater and surface water, which is why that's included in the minimum thresholds for this basin, but not for Pleasant Valley. Minimum thresholds are not proposed at this time for degraded water quality, for the same reason as we discussed in Pleasant Valley. Again, in Los Poses, there is degraded water quality, and in East Los Poses in particular, there are issues with water quality, but those issues tend to stem from surface water inflows that come in from out of the basin and replenish the aquifer underneath the Royal Los Poses. And groundwater production, or cuts in groundwater production, wouldn't seem to us to be able to change or impact the groundwater quality in that basin, to improve it in any way. There is no minimum threshold for seawater intrusion because there's no direct connection to the Pacific Ocean, but again, there would have to be some coordination agreement, particularly between West Los Poses and Oxnard regarding seawater intrusion. And stakeholder and board input is needed for this. I am going to step back two slides to Oxnard because I realized I didn't spell out all of the sustainability indicators in Oxnard, including groundwater, surface water interaction, degraded water quality, subsidence, everything that we've been discussing in the other two basins. And the reason I didn't is that we have groundwater elevation thresholds proposed for seawater intrusion in this basin that are intended to be protective of seawater intrusion, that have the side effect or the other additional effect of being protective of the rest of those groundwater sustainability indicators as well. And so it's discussed in the GSP. I just didn't list it out on this slide, and I didn't want additional confusion with Moving from what the historical sustainable yield has been and the minimum thresholds, we'll need to also discuss projects moving forward. This is an area where there's going to be a tremendous amount of board and stakeholder input. In the draft GSP, preliminary draft GSP, there are potential projects. These projects, we understand, are to be developed and ranked through the process of the Board's Ops Committee and additional stakeholder feedback. And before any of these projects can be included in future water estimates for the basin, there's some additional work that'll have to be required, and that's spelled out in the Sigma legislation, all of the criteria that need to be met before a project can be included for future consideration. So what is not in the drafts? Well, there's no estimate of the future sustainable yield moving forward, and that's going to depend on these discussions about projects and inclusion of projects. It's also going to very much depend on what the future diversions from the Santa Clara River will be. And although this specifies the final board-approved definitions and thresholds, nothing in this draft, preliminary draft, is board-approved. But there are no final definitions of significant and unreasonable measurable objectives or interim milestones in this draft. Those are the key areas that need to be discussed. And there's a lot of ongoing work to begin those discussions and to begin the process of including those ideas in future drafts. So that ongoing work includes some board workshops that will happen. I don't know that those have been scheduled yet. I'll look to staff for that. Additional stakeholder engagement, continuing to work with the TAG. We've got another TAG meeting tomorrow. Incorporation of comments from the TAG, board, public. And then there will be public workshops to have discussion on what's currently available, what's in these drafts, what's been presented. The first of those will be Thursday, February 1st, and that'll be for Los Poses. The second will be Thursday, February 8th, for Oxnard and Pleasant Valley. And if anyone really wants some entertaining bedtime reading, who has not already downloaded these drafts, they are available at the Fox Canyon website.
Questions, comments at this point? Thank you, Jill. Kim, I did have a question. Just for clarity purposes, because I thought the board memo was a little vague on this, on the point of process. So we have this preliminary incomplete draft that we're going to consider releasing for public comment. As of today, what's your contemplation of where this process moves going into the future? Because that wasn't clear from the board memo.
Correct. Okay, well, Chair West, board, the way we envision this happening is, as Jill talked about, we want to have some board workshops. We'll talk about those in a minute in terms of scheduling that. But for the public comment process, should your board decide to open a comment process, our thinking is that as these comments come in and after the period's over and we get the comments back, then those comments will all be reviewed, they'll be categorized. We expect we're going to get a lot of comments about additional work that folks want to have done, and we will work to sort of categorize that and present to your board for discussion and ultimate direction. How much work, it's kind of a bit of a chicken and egg. How much work needs, should be done in these first drafts to get them finalized and then submit to DWR, which then at that point allows us to move forward with sustainability fees and whatnot? And how much should be pushed off into a future work plan program to continue to address data gaps and be addressed in updates to the plan? Now, Sigma says we have to update the plan at least every five years, but Sigma doesn't say that the plan couldn't be updated more frequently than that if your board decides that that is an appropriate thing to do. So depending on the, most likely, you know, I think that what would happen is that your board would tell us how much work needs to be done, and then that would be, DUDAC would go back and rewrite or whatever. If there's additional work that needs to be done that's not budgeted for, we would have to ask for budget to do that work and conduct it. And we'd know what the schedule is at that point for completing that to develop, really, a Sigma-ready final draft that also incorporates all the stakeholder comments. In the process, we'll be developing the projects through your, first through the Ops Committee, as your boards talked about, and then through the board to prioritize those, developing what the future forecasting scenarios are for the 20 years and working for, at least for the Pleasant Valley and Oxnard bases with United to model those. I might be climbing into a rabbit hole here and confusing you, but anyway, the basic link is, once we know from your board, we know what all the comments are that people said, and we get direction from your board as to how much we want to fit in now and how much we want to develop into a work plan for continuing work, because we know that's going to have to be done. Sigma wants us to do that. Then probably we'll have another draft, and we'll have to have another short public review period. It might not have to be 90 or 120 days or whatnot, but we'll have to go through another review period because it's going to be a substantially looking different document for each of the plans. And that'll be more of the regular Sigma process. This is a Sigma plus. I mean, this is an FCGMA process, this comment period. Now, we're just really going to extremes to really try and engage the stakeholders and educate them and get people involved.
That was my impression.
Yes.
I mean, the public comment period, those are sort of magic words that trigger, usually trigger other actions at the end of that period.
Right.
My sense was this was more of a public outreach exercise with a fuse on it.
Correct. This is purely your board's process, and your board can decide what it wants to do at the end of that. It's completely up to your board as to how that process moves forward. What I outlined is what we envision that process will work on, but this is not a, it's not a Sigma process. You're not bound to any particular schedule other than your own schedule and ultimately the 2020 submittal date. Now, your board has made lots of comments about moving forward more quickly, and of course, we can't move into replenishment fees and those kinds of things until the GSPs are adopted by your board and submitted, and then your board can make that finding that it needs to make.
I just wanted to make sure that the process contemplated a public comment period after the draft becomes, is camera ready, or when we think we have a draft that we're now ready to send off to, or a plan that we're ready to send off to the state, that before it's adopted, before it's sent off, there's another opportunity for the public to see that whole plan and comment.
That's correct. And we envisioned that in the cover letter that we put out with, up on the...
I didn't go back and look at the cover letter. Just the board memo wasn't entirely clear.
No, yes, so I apologize that it might have, bravery might have not have been the best explanatory.
Any other questions or comments from the board before we ask the public? Questions or comments? Oh, sorry.
I just have one comment, and that is, I just think the summary we got from DUDAC and the DUC representative was very helpful in terms of saying what this is and what this isn't, and that was probably good to sort of clarify everything. And the second thing is, I don't think there's any agency that's been more willing to take public input than this agency in terms of how much we're, the issue for public input is not only how much time you have, but it's how much... The holidays are over, we've got this out there, so don't wait till the last minute and then say, oh, we need more time for public input. This, this is, we want the input, but, but people have a responsibility to give it in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments by the Board before we open it up for public comment? Any questions or comments from the members of the public?
Good afternoon, members of the Board. Mauricio Guardado, General Manager of United Water Conservation District. My comments are, there's actually two of them with respect to this item. One addressing some of the comments made by Mr. Foreman in a memorandum to this Board, and then the second one on the GSP planning process in and of itself. First and foremost up here, because the comments in Mr. Foreman's memorandum specifically related to United are allegations that are serious and I, and we believe misleading. And what I mean by that is, the United Water Conservation District was tasked with developing a sophisticated groundwater model for the use of this GSP process. We did that. Not only did we complete that model using advanced degree personnel in-house, we vetted that through a panel of well-renowned groundwater modelers. Once that was completed and certified, we went out to a public outreach process and workshops, which included, you know, many of these individuals that are in the audience today. And we had, we had several workshops to gain input, receive that feedback, and see how it might be applied to improve that model. In addition to the group workshops, we had individual meetings to address additional feedback and concerns and hopefully getting to, you know, a more sophisticated place with that model. And I believe we've done that. We've vetted it through a very long process and against, again, with just advanced degree personnel and a certification that's undoubtedly defensible. So I implore this Board, when considering that model, that, that we use it, that we, we use that model and that this Board weighs the sophistication based on best sound science and technology and expertise versus sometimes some emotional opinionated statements. With that and propelling into my next comments related to the planning process, let's move forward. You know, there are a lot of comments of individuals not liking this particular plan, but that's not uncommon. That's why we have the process. If, you know, we have a draft proposed before us, and there's a lot of very smart, intellectual people out there that think our job is to get the right people in the room, and if there are some things you don't like, identify those gaps. If there are elements that the plan is missing, let's specifically identify those and eliminate some of the complaining so that we can move this process forward, because it is a process, as we heard from Mr. Kim Loeb. So once again, United Water Conservation District supports this effort, supports this Board moving this agenda forward. And again, please make no mistake about it, in that process, you have a very highly sophisticated model by which to run several scenarios by. Thank you.
Susan Mulligan, Cuyahoga Municipal Water District. I just would ask, because I'm hearing different things from different Board members and there wasn't clarity in the staff report, that we receive clarity about whether this is the opportunity or the responsibility for stakeholders, where we need to make our comments known during this 90-day period, which is difficult, because it's a partial report, and it doesn't have the sustainability criteria or the cost of the projects or how much cutbacks are going to need to be done. So commenting will be expensive, frankly, hiring experts, attorneys. But if this is our chance, and as Director Bennett says, we need to comment now, we will do that. It would be preferred, I think, that this be a sort of a loser comment period, and that when the document is complete, there be a period where we have all the information before us, it's efficient for our experts, our attorneys, our staff to look at this plan and be able to comment in a more knowledgeable and efficient manner. So I just ask for clarity, we will do whatever we need to do, but if you could just be clear today, is this our last chance or not? Thank you.
Susan, I can tell you that it's my understanding, based on our conversations here, that this is, I said, in the nature of a public outreach exercise with this preliminary draft, and that the contemplation is that when the plan is completed, there'll be a formal, public comment period before adoption or submission of any plan. I can't tell you today how long that period will be, because this Board hasn't discussed it, but at least in terms of process, that's what we've discussed.
Sure.
Yes.
We certainly appreciate comments commensurate with the level of detail in the plans at each stage, that will help us as we move along.
Of course. Thanks, Ed.
That, that was going to be the comment that I was going to make, is that nobody can comment on stuff that's not in the plan, except to point out that it's not in the plan. And so, it'd be completely inappropriate for us to not allow, this is not final comment, but I would suggest that it should be the comments about the information that's available now, those comments should be made now. So that, I mean, we're basically trying to invite, is this, is this level, what do you have about this level, so that when we, when we add the additional information, the comments should be primarily focused on the new information that's added, rather than now coming back at the last minute and saying, hey, the stuff that was presented in January was, was a problem. So I guess that's how I see it, certainly not, it's not the final, but it's important. And so, yeah, there may be some effort that has to go into commenting on the interim draft, but that's a better way, that's a reasonable way for us to get to a final draft.
Thank you.
Jeanette Lombardo, California Food and Agribusiness Advocates. A couple of points I need a clarification on. I have to agree with you, Mr. Bennett, on, you cannot comment on what is not in the plan, but the problem is, when you're looking, reviewing the plan, you have to decide what you want to see in the plan that isn't there. And there is an expense associated with guessing what should be in the plan when it's not there. And at the same time, we're submitting these comments within the next, whatever it's going to be, 90 or 120 days, we're also working on the plan. There's a TAG meeting tomorrow. So I think you're really, by submitting it now incomplete, are really taxing the people who are working on the plan, many who are volunteering. So I think you need to be cognizant of that. The other question I have, maybe Kim, you can help me, you said, you know, this sort of goes back to the interim plan that we were talking about earlier. Is there a cost to have the state re-review the plan? If, if we submit it and they approve it, but then we change it before the five-year period? Besides the cost that's going to be associated from DUDAC to rewrite it, if we, if the stakeholders come up with a plan and we want to substitute it out, is there a cost to have the state re-review the plan? Because I think we have to be fiscally responsible. We are asking our growers to give a lot of money, not only in new water sources, but the million dollars that has been spent on this plan. So I think we need to be prudent in how we tie this up here. The one thing I am concerned about is the time for commenting. It was my understanding, and I, and, you know, I'm sorry with the fire, I can't even remember where or when I read it, but once this was released, there was a certain amount of days of review, and then they were going to finish up the plan based upon the comments received and the work being done during the comment period. And then we were going to have a chance to review it again, but that review period was shorter. And I would ask that the review periods be the same, because we don't know how much more data is going to be added that has to be reviewed by legal staff. So, can you answer the question, Kim, on the cost? Sorry.
I think the question was if you, if the, oh, for example, if the OPV allocation plan changes after the GSP is submitted and approved by the state, does that whole GSP then need to be resubmitted and re-approved, and is there a cost to that?
Right. I, I think that's what you were getting at. And so, the way that the GSPs will be structured is that the allocation plans themselves will be an appendix. The, in the GSP, refer to an allocation plan and how that will reduce pumping over time. And so, I don't believe that a, a minor change or an update such as a change to the allocation plan would require resubmittal of the entire plan and starting from scratch on that. So that is, that is an entirely unlikely scenario, I believe.
Is there a charge to submit the plan to the state?
No.
I can't imagine there's any charge. I mean, the state-
Not, not the first time.
It wouldn't surprise me if they charged us to review it, but that's-
Right, yeah, but I mean, when, when our plan's ready, we submit it. We change the plan, we submit it. They're a regulatory agency, they shouldn't be sitting there charging us for it.
That's exactly right. And then, and then they, they've asked for that, but there can be, there can be updates to the plan without submitting a, a new revised plan.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Terry Foreman, I'm a member of the TAG, and I was referred to earlier. I think all of you have my memo, so I hope you've had a chance to take a look at it and read through it, so I'm not going to read it for you. But I just want to make a few comments, maybe emphasize a few things. One is, the sort of communication, I guess, that, that I hear other people having issues with too, is understanding what the process is and what the milestones are, and then what we're really expecting for each of those milestones. And I think, Chair West, you made a good point. Is, is this a review for the plan, or is this just a review for the material we have? And really, what is it? And I think that, you know, based on the decision that you made in November, which was to direct staff to complete a plan, and the questions were asked, can you complete the plan? The answers were yes. Well, clearly, that's not what we got back. We got a compilation of the historical conditions and information with a lot of work yet to be, remain to be done. And I commend, the consultant did a great job of summarizing all the activities that are yet to be done in order to prepare a plan. And that's a lot of work, and I also would expect to see a lot of stakeholder involvement and TAG reviews and that kind of thing, as outlined by everyone. So I'm not sure exactly what the 90 days really is covering, what the expectation is at the end of 90 days, and then kind of the steps after that. So I'm still not quite clear on the process. I'm not quite clear on what's, will be considered a significant change in the documents as they're published, as to whether they would be subject to another round of change. For example, there were some major changes in the documents that we got on November 22nd that weren't in anything previously that TAG reviewed, and, you know, is that a significant change? I'm, I'm not sure how you're going to decide, you know, what's a significant change and what will trigger, you know, another day, 30, 60, 90, whatever the process is. So I think some of the questions you're hearing is, is when, how should we focus our efforts and what's the expectation, because this is all tied together. So with that, I, I think understanding the process or clarifying a process with some milestones and expectations would, would be helpful. And as a member of TAG, that would be kind of helpful to know what we're going to be doing there, too. And then, I, there's a lot of really good discussion with input today from, from the allocation plan. I was hearing things that really would go into ultimately developing a plan, like the conjunctive use that's actually been done in the county, which is a great thing and should continue. And, and the conjunctive use being using both surface water and groundwater, and how that affects yield, because that does affect the yield and how that ultimately gets allocated. We talked about, you know, where we want to be, and that becomes part of an element of a plan. Where do we want to be and how do we get there? And all those things need to be developed and brought together to put into this plan. Director Bennett, you talked about being in the court, the coordination agreements and how Pleasant Valley needs to operate to not impact Oxnard and create seawater intrusion in Oxnard. All of that needs to be analyzed and become part of the plan. We don't have any of that yet. We've got to discuss all that, we've got to develop that and analyze it in order to get it into the plan. And that, to me, is going to take a bit more than 30 days, but anyway. The other comment is, you know, we need to get the public's confidence in a plan where the technical foundation is, is not adequately settled. And I, I just used one example in here for Pleasant Valley and the water balance of the basin. In the last draft that I saw for the water balance of the Pleasant Valley basin, there was 4,000 acre-feet-a-year surplus, which is about 130,000 acre-feet over the 31 years. In the current draft, it's basically said there was minus 200 acre-feet-year balance. So we have a 130-some-thousand-acre-foot difference over the month. It went from 130,000 acre-feet surplus to 6,000 acre-feet deficit in the, in the plan. So obviously, that's a huge disconnect that we need to, to sort out before you can even start talking about yield and that kind of thing. The comment about United's model, I apologize if United felt I was attacking their model. I'm not attacking their model. I think they've done extremely good work, and I really appreciate all the work that they're doing, and I'd like to see that being done more. As a matter of fact, I've recommended a TAG and I've advocated here that we end up with a model that we use to do these analyses. I think United is on the right track. I've got questions for United that I'd like to be evaluated of their model, but I'm not saying it's a bad model, I'm not saying it's a wrong model, I just have questions that I would like to have addressed. We were doing that earlier in TAG, and because they've been working on it for the last few months, we haven't really had the opportunity to do that, we've been working on the, other things as well. Maybe we need an ad hoc, but that's a TAG discussion. So I, I just want the Board to know and United to know that I, I'm not critical of the model in the sense that it's wrong, so I, and I think that we should be using that model ultimately, but I would like to, I have a few more questions that, and would like to dig into it deeper. I've been doing modeling for 35, 40 years myself, so I, I think I, I should be given at least an opportunity similar to their reviewers. I think the TAG should have a, an opportunity similar to the outside reviewers, so that's what I was asking for. Nothing critical, it's, again, I think, what we want to use. It's similar to what Cuyahoga's proposing to do, making it very open and, and open process, transparent process, to be sure everybody's comfortable that we've got the, the tool that can analyze the questions. So just to clarify that. And then again, the last comment that I, that I made deals with this, when is a change significant that you're going to, you know, have input? There was a complete change in thresholds for the Pleasant Valley that were presented here. It went from plus 18 feet to, to minus 20 feet. That just came out in the draft, that wasn't discussed at TAG at all. There was a whole analysis, that Scenario F that was done, that TAG didn't have an opportunity to review. So to, to make us all comfortable, it'd be good to know, you know, what is the significant changes that you're going to want to go out for, for public review and comment? And, you know, TAG is working well together, I think you've got a good group assembled there, and we would enjoy having an opportunity to provide continued input, and we will continue to do that if asked to do so. So with that.
Terry, to answer your question in terms of process, I think the process fairly, can be fairly simple in the sense that the answer to the question is, the work's still continuing. The, the publication of, of the preliminary drafts isn't going to affect that. It may increase the amount of work that needs to be done, depending on the comments, but it's, you know, it is, it's, it doesn't change the fact that the work to fill the, the gaps that you mentioned and that Mauricio mentioned goes, you know, is continuing and needs to continue, so that along with additional work that may be generated based on the comments, we can eventually get to a completed plan. With respect to, there'll certainly be at least- With respect to, there'll certainly be at least one more public comment period, because inevitably, there's going to be a significant difference between the preliminary plan that we have today and the, hopefully, the final plan that we get sometime in the future. Now, if the public comments that grow out of that review process, you know, result in significant changes, that's something that, you know, the Board will have to consider at that time. Obviously, not knowing what those comments are or what those changes might be, it would be all too much speculation to guess. But I think it's fair to say that, you know, the work goes on, the process continues, there will be further reviews. And, you know, and we're all looking, we're all trying to accomplish the same thing in terms of, you know, the goal is to generate not just a plan that satisfies the state, but a plan that satisfies the needs of the community as well.
All right. Yeah, and I think the comment that you made about calling it a public review process, that's a pretty formal term that generally indicates you're at the end. And now, you're asking for public input. So, that's why I say the communication is...
I'd like to think we're at the end of the beginning and getting closer, but that's about...
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree. I would agree. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Afternoon, Chair West and Directors. I'm David Borchards, Director of Borchards, Representative on TAG. No disrespect. Director Borchards. I may be off TAG now, who knows? I just wanted to make a few thoughts. I'm not here today to comment on process. As I said last time, a technical advisory committee was formed to review the technical aspects of the plan, so I don't believe it's in my purview to make comments about process. But I do want to give you a little bit of information from my perspective that may help on this. I do want to first congratulate DUDAC on completing a tremendous amount of work in a short period of time and producing these preliminary drafts or whatever we're calling them at this point, and staff as well. They did a lot of work in a short amount of time. I also want to especially thank Jill for breaking out in that first or second slide the parts of the preliminary drafts that have been reviewed by TAG and that have not. I think that's very critical for the stakeholders to understand, because I'm getting phone calls from, primarily from the agricultural community about the numbers. What do you think about the numbers, Brian? Do you agree with the numbers? And unfortunately, I can't give them an answer because a lot of it is new information. And the pieces that I have seen before have changed very significantly from what's been discussed in TAG. So, we're going to have to look at these numbers. And I'm not here to complain about that. That's where we're at in the process. It is what it is. But the stakeholders need to understand what's reviewed and what hasn't been reviewed, because some of them are relying on TAG. Just one example to highlight this, in the latest draft that came out for the Lost Poses Basin, with respect to the West Lost Poses Basin, there was a brand-new finding that approximately 20% of the water balance for the West Lost Poses Basin is coming from the Pleasant Valley Basin. This is quite a large change in our understanding in the basins, because up until I read this in the draft, it was my understanding that everybody in the technical community believed that there was no groundwater flow between those two basins. And now, all of a sudden, in the draft, without any discussion, 20% of the water balance for the western part of the Lost Poses Valley is now either moving through the Springville Fault or up and through the Camarillo Hills and over into the West Lost Poses Basin. I don't understand it. I don't know what to tell people when they call me and ask about it. Again, not here to complain, just illustrating something that's still out there that we need to work through at TAG. And that's just one of many examples. I echo Mauricio's comments. We need to identify what the key parts that are missing. Jill's slide did it. And I think the number-one issue up there that was on her slide, I don't know if we can go back to that. What's not in the drafts? Definition of significant and unreasonable. That is the cornerstone of SIGMA. SIGMA says you define what significant and unreasonable effects are, then you develop a plan to prevent them in 20 years. We haven't defined what those are. Yet, we have a plan that proposes minimum thresholds, which are the quantification of the significant and unreasonable results. How can we have quantified something that we haven't defined? So, I'm just trying to illustrate, we need to take a step back and define what it is we're trying to achieve. I'm not saying it's a lot of work. We just haven't gone through the process. And that's what the regulations require us to do. Moving forward with the United model, I'm, again, pretty comfortable with the model. I think the issue for some of us is just, we want to see the documentation before this is all said and done. This latest issue with the underflow from Pleasant Valley to West Lost Poses, I'm not sure if that came out of the model or somewhere else. If it did, I'd like to understand where that's coming from, because that would be a new part of the model that I had not seen. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Brian.
Good afternoon, Directors. I'm Tony Morgan, Deputy GM.
You're not really, yeah.
For United Water Conservation District for the groundwater programs. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. I'm here today against the guidance of my doctor. But when I received the memo authored by Mr. Foreman earlier today, it became pretty apparent that my presence was necessary to respond to some of the comments and allegations advanced in the memo. So, there were a few threads in the memo, and I'll try to categorize my responses based on those threads. Hopefully, my voice will last a few minutes longer here. One of the comments is, United staff was unresponsive to Mr. Foreman's requests for more or additional modeling efforts, data, those kinds of things. What was failed to be included in the memo was that there was a lot of discussion about the prioritization of staff time. What's most important to get done at this point in time? And we've heard on multiple occasions that the completion of the groundwater model documentation was a far higher priority task. And so, staff's time has been spent towards doing that rather than providing other miscellaneous groundwater modeling or other analyses that are of marginal value to the plan development process at this point in time. They can be done later. And things like particle tracking for seawater intrusion, that's certainly things that are on our radar screen to be done, just not done today. There's a certain number of staff hours that are available to devote to this, and it's going to go to the highest priority items. And right now, that's the model documentation. So, the statement that the requests have gone unanswered, I feel, is both inaccurate and a bit misleading to this Board. So, I wanted to bring that to your attention. A comment on another thread was, CAGUS has more transparency in their model development and language to that effect. I'm not sure exactly where that comes from, since TAG hasn't seen any of the CAGUS modeling efforts to date. They're just now getting to the point where it's appropriate for TAG to take a look at it. And a few weeks ago, I think it was three weeks ago, Intera and CAGUS folks came over and met with United's technical staff. And we went through the models and talked about how we dovetail the edges and make things match and what do they see and what do we see. And we had a nice technical discussion on that. So, these kinds of comments are continuing in this and other venues, that Mr. Foreman would like more transparency in the model development process. I'm not sure exactly what that means. There have been multiple technical meetings for anyone who wished to show up to go through the model in detail. We've done at least two of those. We've had multiple discussions of various elements of the groundwater flow model at the TAG meetings. And we've had one-on-one sessions with Mr. Foreman, with which he could advance any questions he had about the groundwater model that's under development. So, I'm not quite sure I understand where the comment is coming from on the lack of transparency or everything. Any question that we can answer, we will answer and have already done so. There's a thread on model review. United is elected to have its model reviewed by an expert panel of groundwater models. And this process has been occurring. It's been underway for quite some time. They reviewed the model at various developmental stages along the way. This expert panel has groundwater modeling credentials that exceed any of the members of TAG. These are internationally renowned people. United made the conscious decision that we wanted that level of review of the groundwater flow model as its initial step. And one of the requests of the expert panel, not unlike some of the TAG members' requests, is that they would like to see the documentation. So, that's one of the reasons why that documentation has moved to a high priority for staff's time, is to make sure we get that document to them and they have an opportunity to review that and give us further comments on the groundwater flow model. Once the documentation is done, that expert panel has reviewed it, we've responded and satisfied those comments, then the documentation will become available for consideration by TAG and anybody else who cares to look at it at that point in time. So, the suggestion that the GMA should consider embarking on a path of building another groundwater model, I'm not sure exactly where that comes from. And it seems, I mean, it seems to imply that the goal is to drag this out a little longer. Okay, if we take another three years to develop a new groundwater model, then we can wait another three years before we have to submit any things. But the reality is, we have deadlines of 2020 facing us, and so, we can't take forever. So, we need to use the tools that are available to us in the toolbox and get on with answering the questions that are important to us. This thread talks about information that hasn't been vetted by TAG that's included in the preliminary draft of the GSPs. And from my perspective, I prefer to call the preliminary drafts, I know that's the Board's terminology and staff's terminology, I think the term progress report fits very well. This is what we've got done to date. This is what it looks like. It clearly identifies holes that need to be filled, and it's a progress document. So, it seemed to be a desire in the memo to blame United staff for providing the GSP consultant and GMA staff with supplemental modeling runs, the Scenario F that's been discussed today, to assist in their preparation of the GSPs. United provided those drafts at the request of the GSP consultant and staff. United is not under any obligation to get permission from any TAG member to do these analyses. The request came from the GSP consultant and staff, and we responded in trying to be helpful with their technical efforts. There's an implication that somehow United colluded with DUDAC and the GMA staff to slip this information into the document at the last minute so it could escape the TAG's review or comment. That, to me, that totally misses the point. The point was to get a document as complete as we could get it at this point in time. It's going to go back through TAG review. It's going to go back through Board review. It's going to go back through stakeholder review. Again, there's no collusion. There's no intent to try to slip something in at the last minute and get it through. This document isn't going to DWR. It's not going anywhere. It's here for us to use as a tool. So, I'm not sure exactly what that comment was driving at, but nonetheless, there. There's also a thread through there that says words to the effect that TAG has not vetted. And it's on different, differing items. And so, I want to lay out what I think is, from my position on the TAG, it's a misconception. The TAG is not there to vet every single thing that goes into the GSP document. We don't have the expertise to vet everything that goes into the GSP document. We're not there to approve everything that goes into the GSP document. We are there to provide technical expertise, guidance, opinions to the Board, to GSP consultant, to staff, to help in the preparation of the GSPs. The TAG is not the approval entity for this. The Board, with input from stakeholders, along with the GSP consultant and staff, they're the ones that are assembling and have to be comfortable with what the GSP document says ultimately down the road. Staff doesn't have, excuse me, TAG does not have to, quote, approve, whatever that means, everything that's in that document. It's likely there'll be things that certain TAG members don't agree with in that document. But the point is, is that it's this agency's prerogative to decide what goes in that document. TAG provides input for your consideration, and then you make the ultimate decision with stakeholder input and staff and your consultant as to what's going there. So, I'm rapidly running out of gas here. Our focus going forward is to get these plans completed. And we need to advance this effort using the best available science and data that we have, knowing full well that we'll never have perfect data, but we have a lot of data. And we can make a lot of educated assessments on the information that should go into these plans. Anyway, I apologize for not having the energy to make it here earlier for the economics presentation. Thank you for allowing that to be postponed to a future session. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, so, before us, I guess, is what to consider, whether or not we want to open a comment period, and if so, for how long? Any thoughts, questions, motions? Go ahead.
I was going to say, I believe that the staff recommendation is fine, that even though it was going to be 120 days, the document was out. People can comment, and they've had the time to read it. So, I believe 90 days is a fine time.
Is that the motion?
Sure, that's a motion.
Mr. Chair, Board, the other thing before you move on this, I did want to point out, we did talk about having some technical workshops for your Board. Did rest some of the subjects that some of the speakers have talked about to go into more detail of some of these things, so you guys can make your informed decisions, provide the informed direction. And we would recommend that you plan on scheduling the February and March special Board meetings that were in the schedule, that we plan on having those meetings to discuss some of these issues, if that's...
Special Board meetings as a workshop.
As, yes. And we may be able to do some at regular meetings, depending on the agenda load. But we should schedule, we should make sure that we're ready to have those.
Any discussion on the motion to adopt a 90-day public comment?
I, I...
Go ahead, you first.
You know, the value of the input is always based on the credibility, you know, as it comes forward. And I just have to say that, you know, from the TAG and, you know, Mr. Foreman's letter and stuff, it's been incredibly relentless criticism of every step along the way here in terms of this. Every technical issue has the potential to be examined to the next degree. And I think it was said really well, at some point in time, you have to prioritize your resources. You have to prioritize, you know, what you're dealing with. And the question in front of us, and I think I just, you know, the TAG is there to give us some advice. I think it's exactly right. The TAG is not there to approve every detail of this or to, you know, give their blessing of everything. They're there because I don't have the technical expertise, and each one of us has somebody technical there that we want to be able to ask questions of and all of that. And I think if the TAG thinks their role is different than that or more expensive than that, that it's mistaken. The fundamental question for us is, is it, are we in the appropriate range here? And that's part of what the draft is getting out there. The draft is saying, you couldn't have a year ago been able to say, hey, it looks like we're somewhere around 60,000 acre feet on the Oxnard Plain. It looks like we're somewhere around that. We're going to start way higher than that, but it looks like that's where we are. That's, that's trying to just bracket this thing, you know? And so, when these draft comments, and Susan Mulligan was asking, you know, are we way off? Instead, is somebody going to say, no, sustainable yields really 150,000 acre feet on the Oxnard Plain, you know? So, the question is, are we in the appropriate range? Because no matter where you are, you could always ask, you know, for more technical information. So, it was stated over and over again in the letter, how can you maintain public support if you do this, if you do that, et cetera? And I want to come back and say this. How can you maintain public support and how can you maintain the public's trust? And I would say, how can you maintain the public's trust if you won't make the appropriate hard decisions that are associated with this basin that has been in overdraft for decades and that has saltwater intrusion, seawater intrusion for decades and that we were under mandate to end 30 years ago and we missed the deadline? And how can you maintain the public's trust if you won't make the appropriate hard decisions in the appropriate time? That's the question that I think is more appropriate than, oh, you can't maintain the public's trust because you, some technique... public's trust because you, some technical thing there. The second thing I just want to say is, 20 years from now, when this is all supposed to be done, as was pointed out by DUDAC, we will still have significant uncertainty about water. We will always have uncertainty. The question is, do you appropriately scale it in? And if people demand that we have to have certainty before we can move forward, it's just going to be, it's not going to be appropriate, and we will lose the public's trust. And if this agency loses the public's trust, public's in a different frame of mind than they were 30 years ago when this agency was created, and most people weren't paying attention. People will be paying attention to this agency a lot and how this agency operates itself. And so I think that the challenge that was raised there about public trust is one that we have to think carefully about, but think differently than was raised in the letter. Thank you very much. And one other thing I just wanted to add, and that is, I know that comment's been made about Los Postes, and they've got a five-year averaging plan and all of that stuff. It's good for the goosebumps. Los Postes and the Oxnard Plain, Pleasant Valley are different animals. There's different water equation in Los Postes, number one, that we have, you know, issues of saltwater intrusion, et cetera, here that are different than there. They have, you know, the groundwater levels in some areas going up. The other difference is, Los Postes is coming up with a stakeholder plan, right? And the Oxnard and Pleasant Valley plan is not coming up with one. And so those are two differences. I want to get that said also. Thank you.
So there's a motion to establish a 90-day public comment period with respect to the preliminary drafts that were released in November? Is there a second of the motion?
Chair, I would second that motion. And could I just make a few comments as well? Would you indulge the little bit of time? I would like to say that I appreciate our TAG members being willing to stand up and, at times, be at odds with staff and the consultant. It's a difficult place to be, and I appreciate the courage. I hope Mr. Foreman's letter doesn't create a wedge, but I think not. These are all professionals, and I think they seem to me to be working pretty well together. I, too, have some concerns about the process, and we seem to be pretty committed towards a second comment period after further work effort, and that is appropriate. Are we going to see work in progress continue to come out in a piecemeal fashion, or are we going to see it assembled and come out at one point for the second comment period? And I say that because I think about Ms. Mulligan's comments with the effort of people going through and digesting these documents and spending time and resources and effort. And it's not only unfair of us to ask this to be a continuous, nonstop analysis process, but, you know, it's more efficient for everyone to be able to look at things in the whole. And particularly, very difficult to imagine or to try to say what's missing and imagine what might be put in in the future is inefficient. So, Kim, do we anticipate releasing all of these items that were described as needing work and stakeholder involvement and board decisions? Is that all going to be compiled and released all at once for the second comment period?
The way I envision the process, Director Borchardt, is that during this public comment period, we'll gather up the comments from folks, especially things about the level of work that has been done and needs to be done. You know, you've received some comments on that. We will compile that all together in a way that we can present it to your board and talk about what needs to be done for these plans now to finish these first plans, and what is something to be on a work plan for a future update. Once we get your board's direction on where do we stop studying and move forward, and where do we, you know, what do we push off into a work plan, then the consultant will know what additional work needs to be done, if it's more work than was originally scoped in the process, and then we'll know what it will take to put that together. And then the final draft will be prepared for your review and a second public comment period. Now, many of these other issues that we need all the stakeholder boards' comments on, those will be workshop items that will get those comments. But no, I don't envision that we'll have a continuous iterative process of plan updates. I don't think that'll get us to where we need to be.
Just to be clear, Mr. Bondi described this concept of 20% of the water balance of the Los Postes coming from the PV basin. That surprises me as well, from the years I've been listening to this stuff. That's a very new thing. And if pieces like that continue to be coming out, to be released, and now the public had to be on the watch on a weekly, quasi-daily basis to look for each new thing that came out, so we could comment on that, too. That's terribly inefficient. It seems to me more appropriate, particularly the stakeholder process, the development of the sustainable criteria, these hard issues that need to be part of the plan, that that be compiled and released for a second comment period. Is that the envisioning? And if it's not, then I think that would be my preference. And I would say that to the board, is that, in my mind, an appropriate way to go about it. We've released this first section of things, historical, current data that we believe to be true. It's great. And it's all in one place. Everybody can look at it. We can comment on those things. We've been told there's more work to do. And if there is more work to do, then that new bunch of work that is done should be released for another comment period. So that's really my main comment. If we're talking about process and defining it, we don't have to define it right now, but it's important. And it's, I think, part of the problem we've been hearing from TAG and from others, is this misunderstanding of process. Thank you. I second the motion of Director...
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. One more comment, okay?
Do I get a chance?
If it's on the motion, go ahead.
Yes, it is on the motion. I agree with Director Borchardt as far as reviewing and getting updates. Give me a book and compile everything together. Trying to do bit by bit is problematic for me, is doing it. Second of all, I am sensitive to what Susan said in making sure that we do not trigger some kind of a legal definition as to what is a public comment period and having them approach these comments or this opportunity here in that realm. So I like the idea of it being called a public outreach for, you know, discussion purposes, and the comments being received back, I would hope would be along the same level of detail and complexity as to what Terry Foreman and Brian Bondi both said there at the podium. As I've read through this document, I have multiple comments also along those same lines as to some confusion I have, based upon my prior understandings of what's on here now. Of course, I don't expect comments on stuff that's not in here. That would just be a waste of time. But there is enough data that's been provided to us with enough uncertainty to it that it does deserve an opportunity for the public to put their comments in place now and for us to receive them and put another checkbox or another check beside that box for the public outreach aspect of this SIGMA plan that we are required to do. Also, going forward and based upon what I've heard and what I would like to see, is a checklist. What do we feel that we have accomplished and what still needs to be done? Now, if I remember correctly, when we first started this process, there was a four- or five-page outline that was fairly well detailed as to each and every part, subpart, subpart, part, and going on, that needed to be in here. Based upon these documents that we've gotten now, what we're looking at, whereabouts, give me that outline back with a check beside it, that we can mark that off and that we've got that in here now, and here's what's still ahead of us. Now, give me a better idea about what is still, that has to be reviewed and has to be accepted and all that before we get to our final. And I think it gives us kind of a scorecard to go along with the public also in order to give some level of comfort as to what is still feels the consultant and staff with some buy-in and maybe even concurrence from TAG as to the level of completion as to whereabouts we are each point in time. My own vision going forward, I think there's at least two more versions of this book coming out or going to be needed. I don't think that with the 90-day and with the work that's going forward, that the next version of this can be complete enough. I challenge you to try and go for that, but I don't see it. I think personally, there's two versions on this that are going to be, because there's such an incredible amount of data that's in here, and the comments that are going to come out of it are going to be looking at things in a different way that those of us that have been doing this forever are going to question and have to go back to. But I like the idea of opening this up for individuals, stakeholders, and districts and everyone to review and comment on what is available and get those ideas into us so we can make a more complete document and clarify what is the vision going forward as to what needs to be done.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. We need a roll call.
Chair West?
Yes.
Director Bennett?
Yes.
Director Aranio?
Yes.
Director Craven?
Yes.
Director Borchardt?
Yes.
I have a question. Kim, did I understand you to say that the special meeting dates for January and February would be workshops? That's next Wednesday.
No, Director Craven, I was suggesting the February and March special meeting dates. I think we're a little past getting ready for the January meeting at this point.
I think so, too. That's why I was asking.
And where do we find the special meeting dates in here?
It's hidden in the next-to-the-last paragraph of the staff report for the calendars.
Item number four?
We didn't have a big chart like we do for everything else.
Next-to-last paragraph?
The front page.
Okay.
Go down. It says, "Second Wednesday in hold."
I'm already looking at the calendar. Ha, ha, there it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. We don't need a vote to approve the executive officer's report, since there is no report.
Oh, we approved the item already, in the consent calendar.
At this point, we will suspend the regular meeting of the board to move into closed session as per the agenda. Thank you.